Good evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in the Posting of the Colors led by Boy Scout Troop 298.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Our thanks to Boy Scout Troop 298. Well done. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carlat?
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Here.
Councilmember Poteno?
Here.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Leone?
Here.
Council liaison Moline?
Here.
And council liaison Halt?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of April 21st, 2015. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. If anyone would like to address an issue that's on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda, we have speaker request forms available in the lobby or from the city clerk. If you will give us a little information, you will be recognized at the appropriate time. First item on the agenda is a presentation. Start with the American Cancer Society Relay for Life.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Jill Mills, and I, along with my husband Tim, am here to present information on the Relay for Life event. The goal of the event was not only to raise money for cancer research, but to spread cancer awareness, celebrate the lives of cancer survivors, remember those who have lost their battle to cancer, and to bring communities together in a united fight against In May of 1985, Dr. Gordy Klatt spent a grueling 24 hours circling the track at Baker Stadium at the University of Puget Sound in Tacoma, Washington, with his family, friends, and patients watching him as he ran, walked more than 83 miles that year, raising $27,000 in pledges for the fight against cancer. As he circled the track, he thought of how he could get others to take part, and he envisioned having teams participate in a 24-hour event to raise money to fight cancer. So in 1986, 19 teams joined together in the first relay event at the Stadium Bowl and raised $33,000. Sadly, Dr. Gordy Klatt passed away August 3rd, 2014, at the age of 71, from heart failure and after battling his own stomach cancer. At the age of 22, I was diagnosed with cancer. I had ovarian cancer and had a major surgery. After a myriad of treatments, appointments, and therapy, I am happy to report I've been cancer-free for the last 20 years. My husband and I have participated in Relay for Life at Peoria, Arizona, for the past eight years. This year, we're participating as the event leads. Coordinating and overseeing the details of this event, to date, we have raised more than $20,000 and have 36 teams joining us. I'd like to take this time to thank Mayor Carlat for joining us on April 25th to welcome all the participants and guests joining us that evening. Thank you, Mayor Carlat, and Councilmembers.
Thank you. And now, I would also like to welcome the United Blood Services to the podium.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Brad Daughtry. I am the Marketing Manager for United Blood Services Arizona, and I'm so happy to be here to present a really wonderful award to the city of Peoria. First of all, thank you, Mayor Carlat, and the City Council for your support of the three blood drives held in the city of Peoria in 2014. The city of Peoria blood drives resulted in 208 total donations, which is what earns you the Platinum Award level. Out of the 1,080 organizations that host blood drives in the state of Arizona, only 50 of these organizations achieved the Platinum Award. But here's where it gets kind of cool, I think. The city of Peoria has nearly 70 percent employee population involvement in blood donations, making the city of Peoria Blood Drive Program the largest percentage of participation among all valley municipal groups, and that includes the city of Phoenix and the city of Mesa.
Wow.
Wow. So if I, well, first of all, on behalf of United Blood Services and all of hospital patients who have needed blood transfusions, thank you and congratulations on this great achievement, and may I approach the dais to present you the award?
Please. Okay. All right. The next item is the Consent Agenda. These are items on the agenda listed with a "C." They are considered routine by the city council or have been previously addressed by the council. It will be passed by one motion unless a member of the council requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Vice Mayor Edwards and seconded by Councilmember Finn. Please vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. We will now move on to new business. First item on the agenda is 12R. This is a public hearing, general plan amendment, land use map, West Wing Mountain Development, Parcels 24 and 27, Lake Pleasant Parkway and West Wing Parkway. And I would also like to take Item 13R at the same time. We will vote on them separately, but I'd like to hear the presentations for them together. Item 13R is public hearing rezoning West Wing Mountain Planned Community District, Lake Pleasant Parkway and West Wing Parkway.
Chris Hock, as our Planning and Community Development Director, will make the presentation on these items.
Thank you.
Great, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have two cases for your consideration, both filed by Tiffany and Bosco on the behalf of the landowner, which is pivotal group, rather. The pivotal group, incidentally, was the original landowner of the 1,312 acres, or roughly two square miles that comprises today's West Wing community, and they're part of the original planning and visioning of that community. So tonight, we're considering two of the remaining undeveloped parcels for West Wing. The parcels are located, and I'll show you a graphic in a second that shows you better detail, but contextually, the parcels are located at the northeast corner and the southeast corner of Lake Pleasant Parkway and West Wing Parkway. They're approximately two miles, I would say, south of the Loop 303, and about mile and a half, two miles north of the Happy Valley Lake Pleasant Parkway Commercial Core. The requests tonight are twofold. The first request, which is 12R, is a minor general plan amendment. This is a request to redesignate the site from community commercial to low-density residential, two to five units per acre. And then the companion request is for a rezone to amend the planned community district zoning, which is today, commercial, to residential, with the ultimate proposal to develop 140 single-family residential lots on the property. Okay, so more specifically, the sites that were in question today are identified in red, and they're roughly about the same size. If you look at northeast corner, that's what we call Parcel 27. That's roughly 20.6 acres. The southern parcel, Parcel 24, is about 20.1 acres. So just looking at the area land uses, we'll start north of the site and kind of work ourselves clockwise. North of the site today is undeveloped land that's owned by the State Land Department. To the east of the parcels are developed single-family residential that's part of the West Wing Planned Community. South of the site are a portion of developed single-family that's part of Cibola Vista Community. And there's also a vacant site of about 17 acres that's just north of the Cibola Vista Resort. That site happens to be zoned commercial. Going westbound, there are two commercial, minor, small commercial pieces, an eight-acre piece and a 3.7-acre piece that's part of the West Wing Community. They're also zoned commercial. And then further west is the existing Pleasant Valley Community. So the site, as you can see, is bordered on the west by Lake Pleasant Parkway. This is currently a four-lane limited access parkway that provides north-south regional access through the community. The ultimate configuration envisions a six-lane facility. The site is also accessed by West Wing Parkway, which is a four-lane major arterial that currently terminates at a signalized intersection at Lake Pleasant Parkway. This is the predominant road through West Wing, as you know, and then connects up with 83rd, which provides major north-south access through Peoria. So looking at the graphic, while West Wing Parkway, rather, does terminate at Lake Pleasant Parkway, you can kind of see the dotted red line to the left of Lake Pleasant Parkway. That's to signify the future Lone Mountain Parkway. So that's shown on our general plan as an arterial. I will note that it's not currently funded, not currently contemplated as a near-term improvement, but it is on the general plan as a future connection to Loop 303. Looking at area context, also, as I mentioned, the Happy Valley Lake Pleasant Commercial Core is an entitled intersection. All four corners entitled for commercial, which at build-out will yield about 1.3 million square feet of commercial. I think today, we're about half of that amount, about 650,000 square feet. And then, as I mentioned, about two miles to the north, the Loop 303, the Lake Pleasant Parkway intersection, while vacant today and state land today, of course, it's envisioned as a major employment and retail corridor in the future. So if I could direct your attention to the graphic on the left, that's the general plan land use map. As you know, the land use is one of many elements that comprise our general plan. While the general plan does require voter approval every 10 years, it's also viewed as a dynamic or living document that sometimes requires periodic adjustment. The adjustments can come in a number of forms. Sometimes, it's a roadway alignment that's shifted, that might have changed how an entitlement was originally designed to respond to. It could be a new use, maybe it's a targeted use, and the land uses then need to adjust around it. Could be utilities, or it could be things that happen beyond our borders that might cause changes to land use in the area. The point is, is that the general plan is intended to be a dynamic document that's adaptive to changing conditions. So when looking at the site today, Parcel 27 and Parcel 24, it's currently designated on the general plan as community commercial. So we have several types of commercial designations in our general plan. This happens to be the one that's probably in the middle. It's more intense than neighborhood commercial, generally consists of shopping centers, large-scale retail, and thought to have a market radius of about three to five miles. Surrounding the area on the general plan, you can see in the yellow color, that's low-density residential, and of course, that is what the proposal tonight is, is to redesignate the subject parcel to low-density residential, two to five units per acre. If you look at the graphic on the right, that is the existing zoning in place. So looking at the parcel, it's part of the West Wing Planned Community District, and essentially, what that is, what is a PCD? That is a type of specialized zoning district that includes tailored standards. The tailored standards are developed that may maybe to respond to local context or respond to a particular type of development vision in mind, but it has its own set of development standards and requirements in place. When considering the parcels, the subject parcels, and looking at the PCD zoning there, the underlying designation points to the city's C2 or intermediate commercial district. Just to give you a flavor of what that is or what that provides for, C2 district is the type of commercial district that if you look at most of the mile intersections in southern Peoria, whether it's Cactus and 83rd, Thunderbird and 83rd, that's essentially the type of character. It could yield anything from, you know, shopping, retail shopping. It could be a gas station. It could be fast food. It could be a bar tavern use, restaurant, hotel. But the point is, it's a pretty broad, pretty extensive commercial district. When viewing the rest of the context, again, to the south is, Cibola Vista is a PAD, a Specialized Zoning District. I mentioned that the vacant 17 acres to the south of the subject site that's part of Cibola Vista, that's also zoned. The underlying zoning, again, points to the C2 district. That's additional commercial land. And then to the west, Pleasant Valley is a residential community, and then the state land that's currently undeveloped today, that's today zoned as general agricultural, which we consider a holding zone for future consideration. So before I go into proposal, just a little bit of background about the West Wing property. Again, this is a property that comprises about 1,312 acres, or roughly about two square miles. It was annexed, the property was annexed in the city of Peoria back in 1989. All of the property, it was under the ownership of the pivotal group, which of course is the applicant tonight. They were part of the early planning and visioning for the community. So in looking at the PCD and reflecting on the original intent and the vision of that document, the plan, of course, recognized the spectacular setting of the West Wing property. It's a beautiful property. We all know it, not only with the West Wing Preserve to the north, but also bookended with the Sunrise Mountain on the south side of it. So the vision was to provide for a sustainable community with a strong identity, and so they saw value was to have a variety of contiguous and connected open spaces that could be interspersed throughout the community. Also, the vision was to have, to integrate diverse neighborhoods and product types throughout the community with some commercial uses. So when I say that, I think what the original vision was is to avoid a sense of sameness that we might see in some developments throughout the valley, where you might have one lot size or one product type throughout the entire community. I think the intent here was to create a diversity of product types throughout the community. And so what they did, what the pivotal group did at that time, was they sought a PCD zoning framework to accomplish that vision. Now, the zoning case was originally approved by City Council in 1998. The zoning approval allowed up to a maximum of 2,150 units. The PCD basically divided the development up into four villages, which comprised about 30 development parcels. One of the, I think, one of the premier points of this development case was the open-space dedication, quite extensive open-space dedication to the tune of 344 acres, which of course is one of the major features that allow our citizens for recreational opportunities. At the time, there were also 56 acres of commercial land use. Most of that land use, or at least 40 of that land use is what we're talking about tonight, 40 of the 56 acres at the northeast and southeast corner. It also provided for a park, which is in place today internally within the community, and a school site. So, you know, reflecting on the original vision that I talked about and a diversity of product types, to accomplish that, the PCD provided for three development options, and later in the presentation, I'll talk about those three development options, but they are low-density, semi-custom, and custom. Each development option provides siting guidance, so when a builder comes in to talk to the staff, they have an idea based on the PCD of what the most appropriate locations for each of the development options and what the standards are in place to accomplish that product type. Now, of course, as I mentioned, the vision was necessary to create a balance and a diversity of product types. There's also a limitation. I'll speak to that limitation again in the PowerPoint, but the objective was to not have one development option to be the predominant option. Again, it was to create a balance throughout the community. So just reflecting firstly on the proposed minor general plan amendment, we're talking about a redesignation of 30 acres. Why 30 acres? Why not 40, which is the site? Again, a general plan is, it's broad brush, it's imprecise, it's not parcel-specific. The intent, of course, is to convert the entire site to a low-density residential disposition. So I mentioned earlier, there might be a variety of factors that might warrant a change in land use. Absolutely, when we're looking at a potential change that would result in a reduction of the commercial inventory, that's something we take very seriously, and we're going to want to scrutinize and look at very carefully. So when we took the analysis, we took a fresh step back. We noted a couple of things. We noted that the Loop 303 had changed since the 1998 entitlement, back when West Wing had come in for its zoning. The plan at that time, and the plan that was built around it, was that the Loop 303, the conceptual alignment at the time, was Happy Valley Parkway. That was going to provide the east-west access to the I-17 corridor. Now, as we all know, that ultimately shifted and was constructed to the west and north of the site. So what happened to Happy Valley Road is it became a major, still remained a major east-west connector, but a limited access parkway, and so we saw a few years after that, the development, or the entitlement, rather, of up to 1.3 million square feet of potential commercial space. So what that shift did is it caused an emphasis on the Loop 303 as a superior site and also recognized the Happy Valley Lake Pleasant Parkway corridor as a predominant commercial corridor. I mentioned Lone Mountain Road is intended to provide future access to Loop 303, but also, as I look at that, it's very uncertain. Again, it's not funded, it's not contemplated in the near term. It potentially could provide access to Loop 303. We also looked at what the existing land use designations and the existing zoning in the area, and so I will remark that there was what we observed to be an abundance of commercial acreage in the area. So not only reflecting on the West Wing Parkway, Lake Pleasant Parkway corner, which you can see all the red on your screen, but also if you think about Jomax and Lake Pleasant Parkway, there is 17 acres there. There is also, I'm sorry, 17 acres at Cibola Vista. Go further south, there's 21 acres at Pleasant Valley, which is at the Jomax and Lake Pleasant Corridor, where you already have an emergency facility, rather. Nonetheless, you know, this is a very important thing for our consideration. We did ask the developer to provide us with a market study to further study and justify the conversion to residential land use. And here on the screen are some of the conclusions and findings that they provided. Elliot Pollak, of course, is a noted economist in the valley. What they found is that the site is not viable as a retail or employment site either now or in the future. They observed that the site does not benefit from pass-through traffic. They think the predominant points are at the Loop 303 and also the Happy Valley, that that provides the significant commercial benefit for the area. They also, you know, noted limited north-south traffic in the area, and what I mentioned is, one of the things that we were concerned with too, was the notion of cannibalization. And so what do I mean by that? I mentioned that we observed an abundance of commercial zoning and general plan designated land in the area. What we're concerned about is if we have too many commercial opportunities, what that can do is that can cause a center to struggle to fill those spaces, or it could result in duplicative services in the area, or it could include marginal uses that might come in. So we think to have a healthy balance of commercial is in order, and have a healthy inventory of rooftops to support those commercial opportunities. So staff is in support of the general plan land use change. So moving on to the rezone, again, it's to rezone 40.7 acres from commercial in the PCD to a residential PCD. They are seeking to exercise the low-density development option. I'll speak about that in a minute. The proposal was for 140 single-family lots. The northeast corner would have 69 of them, and the balance of them would be on the, 71 lots would be on the southeast corner. With the conversion of this parcel to residential, this would not result in exceeding the overall cap that I mentioned earlier for the West Wing, and in fact, with the conversion, we'd be somewhere in the range of about 1,600 dwelling units, so quite a bit away from the 2150 cap. This would result in a gross density of about 3.4 units per acre. The lot sizes that are proposed, the range, rather, is from the minimum of 6,000 square feet to the largest one, which is 15,319 square feet. All in all, it produces a lot size average for both parcels of about 7,009 square feet. The open space that's provided with it is about 25 percent of the site, which is well beyond our standard, which is around 12 percent. Okay, so I mentioned earlier, the planned community district framework sought to provide for a variety of product types and neighborhoods within the community. So what they devised in the structure in the document was three development options, okay? And one of the development options was the custom option, they call it, and that is predominantly in hillside areas or areas that are near sensitive areas. Lots in this option range from 13,000 square feet to five acres with a minimum lot size of 13,000 square feet. The next option is what they call semi-custom option, and these are transitional areas, typically between the hillside lots and the lower or the flatter areas, and these lots range from 8,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet in size with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. And then finally, the last low-density option, these are for the flatter areas throughout the development or areas that are not encumbered with sensitive areas or hillsides. Lots in this areas range from 6,000 square feet to about 12,000 square feet with a minimum lot size of 6,000. So as I mentioned, as builders came into the city of Peoria, these are the development options that they could identify and exercise in designing their plats. But I also mentioned that there's limitations within the document so that we get a true mix of types. And so if you look at the graphic on the right, the PCD requires a minimum of 20 percent of the developable area to be custom, minimum of 20 percent to be semi-custom development option, and it provides for a maximum of 40 percent of developable acres to be low-density, so a maximum of that. So we looked at the areas devoted to low-density, and with the conversion, we would be somewhere in the range of 32 percent. So we're still within the boundaries and still within the original intent of the West Wing So now, I want to take a look at the distribution of the different development options. So the areas that you see with the "C," those are the custom development option, and again, those are the areas that I mentioned were hillside, minimum of 13,000 square feet. And then you look at the next development option with the "SC," semi-custom, and as I mentioned, those were the transitional areas. They provide a transition from the hillside to some of the flatter areas, minimum of 8,000 square feet. And then if you look at the final development option, that's the low-density development option. That's where it's been exercised throughout the community. And as I mentioned, it's predominantly in the flatter areas or areas along transportation corridors, and that's in fact where it's developed today in West Wing. Okay, here, I wanted to take a look at the actual lot sizes that have resulted, and I realize it's difficult to see on this screen, but if I could draw your attention first off, these are the low-density parcels. Again, these are located at the edges along the parkway. The typical lot size ranges between 6,000 and 8,000 square feet in actuality there. When looking at the semi-custom option areas, the two predominant lot size types in actuality are the 8,000 to 10,000 square feet and also 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. So even though we have a minimum lot size, in actuality, this is how it's developed in the community. And then finally, when looking at the custom lots in pink, these are lots above 12,000 square feet, but you see the distribution of those and the parcels that were developed under that option, hillside lots. Okay, so now, looking at the conceptual plan, and again, this is a process that unfolded over the last year, and like with any rezoning case, you know, a plan typically goes through a number of iterations and changes to it. So what the latest plan shows is, again, we're talking about two parcels, but they've broken up into four subareas, if you will. Parcel A, which is the area that you see, has a average lot size in that area of about 6,684 square feet. If you go over to the subarea Parcel B, 7,925 square feet. Area C, which is closest to Lake Pleasant Parkway, 6,314 is the average lot size in that area, and then Parcel D, 7,631 square feet. Couple of restrictions that you'll note. You'll note the stars on the eastern edge of that property. I'll talk about some of the neighborhood interaction throughout the process, but early on, there was an interest from some of the neighbors to have a restriction, a two-story restriction, so the developers agreed to that, and so all the lots that you see starred will have a one-story restriction that's placed on the plat. The way this is arranged, all the largest lots The way this is arranged, all the largest lots but parcels twenty-two and twenty-nine, twenty-two and twenty-nine are the parcels that are located immediately east of the subject property. As you can see on the screen, the predominant lot sizes for those existing parcels are, on the north side of West Wing, between seventy-two hundred and seventy-four hundred square feet, and on the south side, between sixty-four hundred and sixty-six hundred. That's the predominant lot size within those parcels. All right, so as you know, our rezoning process, our general plan process, has a extensive notification. Early on, when we get the application, we send out a notice of application. That notice goes to all properties within a one thousand, three hundred and twenty or quarter-mile radius of the site. We also send it to all registered HOAs within a one-mile radius. And we do the same thing when the, when the application's ready to go to a hearing. The applicant is required to have one neighborhood meeting as part of the rezon process. Again, with the amount of citizen interest that we had in this case, they did have three neighborhood meetings. All three were held at the West Wing Community Center, the first one on November eleventh, February third, and then the most recent one on March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. All were well-attended. At the November eleventh meeting, there were approximately seventy residents there, some of the concerns that residents had at the time, the lot size, what they saw to be the perceived diminishment of the value of the homes. Again, they talked about the two-story homes being intrusive, particularly on the edge. There was concern about the impact on the school in the area, whether this proposal would create additional traffic. And there was some concern with, by, I would say, maybe a quarter of the residents, of an inconsistency with the general plan. We have a general plan, it calls it out "commercial," why don't we just stay the course with "commercial"? So the applicant response after that meeting was to go back, talk to the client about perhaps expanding the lots, consider this two-story restriction, start discussions with the Deer Valley School District, and continue to work with the community. The second meeting that occurred on February third, again, really pretty much a carbon copy to the first meeting, a lot of the similar concerns that you see there on the screen. The developer expanded some of the lot sizes, the development included a hundred and forty-three lots at the time. They were agreeable to the two-story restrictions, and they were, at that time, still in discussions with the Deer Valley School District in terms of the impact on the schools in the area. And then with the March sixteen meeting, that was attended by about forty residents. Some of the concerns seem to, continue to be the, what was perceived as a smaller lot sizes and lot sizes that were viewed as incompatible with the rest of West Wing, impact on the value of homes, impact on school. And again, there continued to be some folks that were concerned with the general plan designation for commercial. So with that response, the applicant, they further reduced the number of lots to what I showed you on the prior screen, to a hundred and forty lots. They did come to an agreement with the Deer Valley School District. The Deer Valley School District has provided the staff with a letter, which is in your packet, and that letter, essentially, the Deer Valley School District is agreeable to the rezoning, provided that two stipulations are put in place. One of the stipulations talks about a donation assistance agreement whereby the applicant and the district agree to a per-unit contribution. And this is very similar to what we see, particularly in the parcels that are in the Peoria Unified School District. We often see a voluntary assistance agreement, accompany those. And then they talked about a land swap. There is a, there is a parcel that is, was provided to the Deer Valley School District at the far, extreme southern end of West Wing, not a particularly developable property. So they, they talked about a land swap whereby pivotal, pivotal, rather, would take that property in exchange for a property on the far north side of the West Wing community, a buildable site on the far north side of it. Now, throughout the process, we've gotten a number of letters. We've gotten about sixty-seven letters in opposition, that's of the printing of the document for the council. We have received six letters of support. We have received also one petition of support, which included sixteen signatures. So what we've, we've attempted to identify here is the distribution of the citizen interest in the case. So what you see in green that we could, that we could attain an address for are those properties that indicated a support of the case, and those in red indicated opposition to the case. This project did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission at March nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. There were ten speakers present, seven spoke in opposition to the case, three spoke in support to the case. So the Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated, there were amended stipulations that were offered to the commission resulting from the most recent, or the March sixteenth neighborhood meeting that occurred. And those stipulations are shown in your, in your ordinance, rather, in your packet. And what they include are, a development is limited to a maximum of a hundred and forty lots. Also, there is to be a maximum of forty-two lots that are less than sixty-six hundred square feet, because there was a lot of concern about the lower end of that scale, particularly around six thousand, six thousand square feet. That would be limited in area. And also, any lots that were under sixty-six hundred square feet would be limited to Parcel C. So reflecting back on the development plan that I showed you, Parcel C would be the southeast corner and the subarea that's most closest to Lake Pleasant Parkway. And then also, a stipulation that staff added was that entry monetization that was done would need to be in accordance with the West Wing design character. It is part of the West Wing community, we want to ensure that it continues, that design character was established. At the end of the meeting, the commission voted six to zero to recommend approval, subject to conditions one through fifteen in your staff report. As we reflect on both cases, some of the key findings, we believe that some of the changes in regional circulation since the original nineteen ninety-eight entitlement, they do necessitate or warrant alteration of some of the land use conditions for the project. We do concur with the findings of the Elliot Pollak study, which is that there was an abundance of commercial opportunities in the area. Again, we have, we have a concern for economic sustainability in the area, and we believe the change to a residential disposition better reflects the needs in the area, and we believe it's an improvement to the general plan. With, in terms of the rezon proposal, this would conform to the residential low land use designation if council was agreeable to the change in land use. We believe the lot size and density is consistent with the abutting parcels. We believe that the, the development project under the low-density option continues the original vision that was provided for the West Wing community, and the community continues to abide by those standards. And we believe it's also consistent overall with the planned community district. And for those reasons, Mayor and Council, we do, our recommendations are that we concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission for the minor general plan amendment to reduce the thirty acres from community commercial to low-density residential. And then for the rezoning case, concur also with the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval to PCD residential, subject to conditions one through fifteen. And that concludes my remarks. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Council, any questions or discussion for Mr. Hockes? All right. Then I declare this public hearing open. I have a number of speaker request forms, and so when I call your name, if you would please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, I would appreciate it. And you have three minutes to speak, and the time clock will be up in that corner. So the first speaker request form?
I'm sorry, Mayor, were we gonna, were we gonna invite the applicant to come up and give their testimony?
He gave me a speaker request form, and I was gonna invite him at a, at another time, unless you feel like you need to speak first? Would you like to do that?
It's a pleasure.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna start with the residents. Mr. Leo Delengas, please.
Mayor, City Council? I'm Leo Delengas. I live at eighty-five, seventeen West White Horn Way. It's in Phase Three of West Wing. I'm a realtor, and I have access to all of the tax data as well as MLS, and I'm concerned for the area. I live in the area, and it's a pocket of elite, upper-class, larger wage owners, wage earners, excuse me, and I'm concerned that by the proliferation of smaller, less expensive homes that you invite the investors in, and with investors you get renters, and the property doesn't, property values do not stay. So the people that are there now, by seeing all of these small lots come in, that are concerned for the area. Several have talked to me about moving because of the fact that they're letting more small lots in. Let me go over some of the data. I had handed out a piece of paper here, which has some data from the Maricopa County tax records. And it shows in comparison, and I'm talking about West Wing, I have taken out any lots that do not have a home on it already, so I have already taken out a number of the custom lots. But if you get to seventy-five hundred square feet, square foot lots, the overall in West Wing, we're at thirty-eight percent. With the proposal, they're looking at eighty-six percent of the lots being either seventy-five hundred or below. Our overall average lot is ninety-three hundred and thirty-six square feet. The average home is twenty-nine fifty-five. Tiffany and Bosco is proposing seven thousand and nine square feet is the average, and on that size of lot, and all the way down to six thousand square feet, you're only gonna put something like an eighteen to twenty-four hundred square foot house on it. If you look at the next block in the middle, this is on sales, and this comes from the MLS, and I'm running out of time, so I'll talk a little faster. But you look at our neighbors, not only West Wing, but Chabola Vista and Pleasant Valley, and the average-sized lots there of what has sold, so it's a good sampling of the area. You're talking ninety-seven hundred and forty-two for West Wing, eighteen thousand for Chabola Vista, and thirteen thousand for Pleasant Valley. And the third block, and I'm gonna pass that and just hit my other notes. We've been touted as the Scottsdale of Peoria, and my feeling is, is that if you continue to put smaller lots and smaller homes on it, we're gonna lose that stigma. And it's going to not only scare away new, higher-paying residents, it's also gonna scare away your better-quality builders as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Muir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Muir, eighty-four, ninety-one West Bahada Road, in the community of West Wing here in Peoria. This is gonna be kind of repetitive tonight, and the analysis of the lot size is the issue that I think is going to be presented to the city council. These are, looks like smaller lots, smaller homes, and will decrease the home value. And we hope that we are able to increase our home values and not decrease them. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Ken Lamando, two-seven-one-zero-two, North Eighty-Fifth Drive, Peoria. I also am a resident in West Wing. And to go over what John said, it is repetitive. Major concern of the homeowners are the smaller lots, to put smaller homes on, create more of a density up in the West Wing area. Something else that came into consideration is the open-space area for these two designated parcels. I have not seen anything that would allow them to put tot lots on to make this more appealing for the homeowners within their parcels, rather than have them spill over into the West Wing community, which apparently they're going to be separated. And the forty-two lots, sixty-six hundred, again, seems like quite a bit of small, smaller lot sizes within these parcels. Council, Mayor, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Smith. My address is two-seven-six-two-seven, North Eighty-Six Lane, Peoria, and I'm also a West Wing resident. Not to kick the same dead horse, but the, of all the planning meetings that we've had, the lot sizes have been the predominant issue. Some of the figures seem to have been skewed or misrepresented at those meetings by both pivotal and some of the other people who have spoken on behalf of the developer. Just this morning, we sent over, in five minutes, tax records showing the amount of lots that are in West Wing, which is one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six. That is the total amount of lots per tax records. It's a physical number, it's not an estimate or a plan that Chris has presented to us in terms of an average. The average size of those lots is eleven thousand, three hundred and fifteen square feet. That's, that's an actual number that any of you can pull off tax records in about ten minutes, and it is definitely not consistent with the low-density application that's come in for a hundred and forty properties that are an average of seven thousand square feet. The school district has informed us, the assistant superintendent has informed us that the school, West Wing School is at capacity. That's also a hard fact, straight from the school district. And as noted in Chris's presentation, the community has predominantly opposed the plan as submitted, and that's been consistent in all the community meetings and basically since day one of this proposal. The only other thing I was gonna comment on in Chris's proposal was the concept of commercial cannibalization is something that we're concerned about with this commercial property. If that's the case, then why wouldn't we be just as concerned about that with turning this into residential and flooding the market with additional inventory when we're just now starting to come out of the recession and the market's just now rebounding? It seems knee-jerk to throw in a considerable number of tracts is already going in around this parcel in large quantity right now to potentially fling us back to exactly where we were four years ago. So that's our concern as community, and that's what I've heard at all the meetings that we've had. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Saltzpa. Please state your name and address for the record.
You pronounced that well. Thank you for your time today. It's Lisa Saltzpa. It's a mouthful. Eighty-five, eighty-six, West Brials Road, also in West Wing. I'm appreciative of the people that have come today to share with you guys our thoughts and feelings as to our concerns of what it's doing to our community. We have reached out to the city on numerous occasions to understand where the information and the numbers came from so that we could ensure we're speaking from the same playbook. We understand how you derived your numbers, and here's our public record information and identify where the differences are so we can be on the same page. Unfortunately, we have not had the opportunity, the city has not provided us that detail, and that's why you're hearing a lot of the comments and concerns, is we don't have anything to validate the information that's been provided. As a resident since two thousand and three, I came into the community specifically for this master plan. I saw the vision, I loved the vision, I love the mix of custom, semi-custom, with some low-density. Unfortunately, thirty-five percent of our homeowners are renters today, and the vast majority of those are in the low-density homes. And someone who has four children, who, I'd love my kids to go in the, to go to school in the community, it's becoming a transient community because we have smaller homes that are becoming rentals, and people are coming in and out of the community all the time. You're having teachers leave the community, you're not having the consistency that's there. When I talk to my friends that live in Scottsdale, I used to live in Scottsdale, I made a decision, a conscious decision, eleven years ago, to come out to West Wing because I saw what it was going to be and where it was gonna, and what it was gonna be like. People who live in Scottsdale live in Scottsdale because of the amenities. How many of us today get in our car and drive forty minutes to go shopping into restaurants in Scottsdale? This is Peoria's opportunity to have a mini Scottsdale in the northern corridor that leads up into Lake Pleasant. This is our opportunity to have a voice, where we didn't have a voice in some of the other areas. We don't have any control over that, but this is the one opportunity as a resident that I can have a voice into what it will go in there and whether or not it will detriment me as a homeowner. So I hope that you guys take those things into consideration in looking at this proposal, and at a minimum, at a minimum, increase the lot sizes that are going to actually enhance our community and not detriment it. Even in pivotal's own proposal to us, the intention for them is to enhance our community, not to be a detriment, and I'm having a really hard time seeing how this is helping me as a homeowner today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Crystal Dykes, eight-three-three-seven, West Desert Spoon Drive. I'm actually a second-generation West Winger. My family, aunts, uncles, cousins moved in there originally about ten, eleven years ago, original owners. And when I decided to buy a home a few years ago, decided I wanted to stay there, and one of the reasons was because of all the exciting... of the reasons was because of all the exciting potential that West Wing had, and retail, and neighborhoods, and slowly after the recession, we've, you know, been had, having more parks and sidewalks and whatnot added. And I think that changing this to residential would take away from that exciting potential, you know, something new, the possibilities. Also concerned, very concerned about the schools. I have several family members that work and go to school there, and it is at capacity, and you could see that just driving by in the mornings or in the afternoons for pickup. Definitely at capacity, and also lot sizes. The proposed six thousand average lot size is smaller than our current average, so I don't see how it's going to improve our home value. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Tony Dudinsky. I live at two-seven-three-hundred-North Eighty-Sixth Drive. And thank you for letting me speak to you guys today, Mayor Carlet and board members. I want to start out by saying also, congratulations to Virgil Binzbacher on being our new Mesquite District Representative. We're so happy to have you on board, and it's exciting times out in the Mesquite District area. It's, it's got great potential, and the future is looking bright for that area. You know, just wanted to mention a couple of things here. Me and my family have lived in the West Wing area for over ten years. We started out there when it was brand-new, so we love living in West Wing, love the schools and the, the way of life that we have over there. It's a beautiful community, and it's well-developed and well-planned out. I have attended all three of the community meetings with the Tiffany and Bosco representatives, and throughout every meeting, you know, the, the concerns were the smaller lot sizes. And we were just trying to see if we could increase those lot sizes. Unfortunately, it still is a concern, as you hear with all the speakers here right now. This will, this will keep property values a, a little bit lower, so we're just looking for some consistency with the average lot sizes in West Wing to, to keep and hold the, the track on that with this development. And, and also, you know, just also, you know, talking for the surrounding communities also, Pleasant Valley, Chabola Vista, or Chabola Vista, and just wanted to, you know, speak up for them too. There was a lot of people that made it to those meetings, you know, a lot of those people weren't ma, able to make it here tonight, so I just wanted to let you know, that was a lot of the, you know, concerns of those residents too, and they're my, my fellow homies too, so, you know. So thank you for your time and for all the work that each one of you do for the city. You represent the residents of Peoria great, and it's a great city to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Victor Pope.
Mayor, my issue is on a different topic, so I may have filed that wrong.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We will move to Dan DeBrusk.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. Dan DeBrusk, ninety-two fifty-eight West Black Hill, over in Chabola Vista. We live in a property adjacent to the, the southeast property, and we've lived there for about five years, and that property's been vacant, and it's, quite frankly, has been kind of an eyesore. And so for, for those of us that are concerned about the retail opportunity there, and the commercial opportunity there, there's a lot of opportunity at Lake Pleasant Parkway and Happy Valley that is wide open right now. And so the demand doesn't, doesn't necessarily meet the criteria for keeping that as a commercial property. We'd like to see that developed and not become an eyesore, like the property that's at Lake Pleasant Parkway where that old hospital is that's gone up and, and looks absolutely horrible for our community. Not that that's what's happening there, but we'd sure like to see that developed into something. And right now, the demand isn't there for a commercial property as much as we'd all like to have a north Scottsdale maybe in our backyard. What we really want is something nice to look at, and right now, it's an eyesore. So hopefully, we can all work together and accomplish this. And they've done a great job of talking about the schools. It sounds like tonight you addressed that the school district was pretty happy with the, with the plan that you guys have proposed and put together. And I got to tell you, I think the Pivotal group has done a great job in coming around the community, going door-to-door, literally, even on Sundays, and meeting at our homes and talking to us about the different options. And I think they've done a great job, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have Susan DeBrusk. Did you want to speak?
No.
Okay, it says that you are in favor.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to say what a great opportunity and privilege it is to be here. I recognize a lot of the faces off the campaign boards. I want to first start out and say, I appreciate you starting your meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. It's just really fresh. I mean, it's just nice to see. I don't, I just wanted to commend you on that, and I also wanted to commend this gentleman on his presentation of the facts and the truth concerning the rezoning. My background is, I've been in thirty, thirty years in the construction business in this town, in this market, building commercial construction, both new and retrofit, and I have a lot of experience to speak from that, seeing what's been built all across the city and all across the valley. I've also spent twenty-two years selling residential real estate in West Wing. Let me back up. I live at two-six-eight-eight-seven, North Eighty-Eighth Lane, in the heart of West Wing. Big house, raised my five kids there. We actually rode motocross, desert motocross, my five, my four girls and son, through West Wing before it was ever, before it was ever a community. It's a great bedroom community, and as I spoke to the commissioner, or the zoning commission last time, they had, it was clear to them, it was a unanimous vote. And because it was a good presentation of the facts and the truth and the reality of the situation, that is the end of town. It's state land, it's the things, it's done. There's no, there would be no use for commercial application. There's plenty surrounding, as he pointed out, plenty of parcels for Pleasant Valley and Chabola Vista. They have their own, so why those people would be in opposition in a community they don't live in is beyond me. I mean, they have their own commercial that they can develop and vote for, and I know for a fact that, speaking from experience, that if this side of the room, if they were to put a Walmart there, if it were a commercial place, we would all be back here again screaming because we're not happy with the use. So it is, as I said before, it's the highest and best use for this forty acres to complete the master plan, and I'm not, I'm not on staff with these people here. I have a real estate, extensive real estate background experience, a construction experience, and they've operated in great faith, or good faith, with all the residents. I've been to all the meetings, and they've done what they said, and the sixty-by-one-hundred lot size is, is not a problem. It's commonplace throughout Peoria, and you can get a good value for real estate, and I, and I sell both new and resale real estate. I hold open houses in West Wing every weekend, and I see the people that are renting, they want to become owners, and as soon as their finances allow, they'll be purchasing property in West Wing because they love living there. The quality of life is very high, it is very great. I appreciate your time, there's not a lot more that could be said, so, thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker request form that I have is for the applicant, Bill Lally. So if you would come forward, I would appreciate it. Says that you're in favor.
Just a little bit. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bill Lally with Tiffany and Bosco, the applicant for tonight's application. And, and I just want to beg your indulgence, just for a few more minutes, over the three minutes, just to kind of address some of the, the items that were laid out tonight. I'm not going to try to reiterate a lot of what Chris said. Chris did an amazing job of giving you the history of West Wing, and it is a twenty-year history. Pivotal has been involved in this property for twenty years, and, and when, when the original development came through, this commercial core along Lake Pleasant made a lot of sense. Exactly what Chris said, the three oh three was going to touch this piece of property. It was going to bisect these four commercial properties and provide an amazing commercial opportunity. And since the three oh three has moved two miles to the west, we have to reevaluate things. And as Chris mentioned, you know, the, the original intent was to have twenty-one hundred and fifty units within West Wing. We are not there today. Even with this proposal of a hundred and forty lots that we're requesting today, we're still two hundred and sixty units shy than what was the cap. And so, you know, this isn't necessarily a question of changing something to commercial, from commercial to residential, to potentially kind of get over a cap that was anticipated. We're still well within all of the guidelines of the PCD. Been around since two thousand and two, was really the inception of, of the development. Multiple amendments along the way. As Chris indicated, there were five amendments along the way. One of the amendments most noteworthy in two thousand and five was to actually expand one of these commercial properties. Ironically, in two thousand and five, everything looked great. This still looked like it was going to be a viable commercial property. Pivotal came in through this process, slightly amended the commercial space to actually make those two parcels equal twenty acres, so they're marketable to the commercial real estate world. That was about the time that Happy Valley Commercial Town Center was really taking off. And so it really became a traffic game, a numbers game of whom, how many people are going to be at that intersection as compared to this intersection. As Chris indicated, this is the very exhibit that was in front of city council in nineteen ninety-nine, when, when the council approved this. This was ADOT's exhibit that showed the yellow line bisecting that little red blob, which is West Wing. It was very clear, I think everyone here assumed, yeah, that makes a heck of a lot of sense. When things change so dramatically as a major regional freeway, it, it requires, you know, a little bit more forethought. In two thousand and five, when they came in with this proposed site plan, they really believed in partnering with Jim Pedersen, who's one of the premier commercial real estate guys and town developers, that they were going to hit a home run here. They actively marketed it from two thousand and five on. And finally, enough brokers told Pivotal that you're just not seeing the facts. The facts are that there's no traffic here. You know, West Wing is starting to build out from a residential standpoint. The traffic numbers are not there. The traffic numbers and all of the commercial users are going a mile and a half to the south. As Chris indicated, this is your general plan. We're sort of this tweener spot. If you look at the two large circles, there's a lot of commercial activity down at Happy Valley. This general plan acknowledges that there's a lot down there. The future corridor of three oh three and Lake Pleasant dwarfs the Happy Valley Commercial Town Center, if you can imagine that, in terms of how much employment and commercial is going to be located. And then you look at all the green that exists along there. That is all flood control, BLM, and state land. You know, so there's not a lot of opportunities for residential to the north of us that's going to drive people back down to this intersection. So it just became a reality of when a major freeway moves, you know, what are we left with in terms of commercial uses? We all know in real estate, it's location, location, location. So if you don't have the right location, the, the retail and commercial users are just not going to go there, not going to spend the millions of dollars to speculate on a site that may or may not make it. As Chris indicated, you know, the general plan is a moving document, it's, it's required by law to be updated every ten years. You guys go through that about every ten years and readopt it and, and look at the regional impacts. You could even look at this and see that there's multifamily approved on, on the general plan just to the north of us, on the state land. Now, again, these are all conceptual ideas on the general plan. Apartments to the north of us may or may not make sense in the future, I don't know, but that's what a general plan is out there for, is to kind of set a, set a template for policymakers and for the community to begin a dialogue. Again, what we're requesting tonight is two of the four parcels to be rezoned. Two parcels that equal almost twelve acres across the street on the west side will remain commercial. There's the commercial property to the south of us, the general plan commercial to the north of us. If, in fact, the area starts to blossom like a lot of people believe, there's still a lot of viable commercial opportunities, you know, for this neighborhood. Again, here's the zoning map that shows the surrounding commercial that would be left over after, if, if this application were to be approved. Chris touched on the Elliot Pollock study. As we began this process a little over a year ago, staff really pushed us to make sure that we were doing our due diligence and doing our homework. It wasn't enough to say, my client's owned this for twenty years, he's paid almost five hundred thousand dollars in commercial property tax. That, that, that means nothing to a planner. He wants to know, what's the reality? Go out and get a, a, a third party to validate what you're telling us. So we went out and got Elliot Pollock. Elliot Pollock is one of the premier regional economists. He knows this area well. He worked on the Tierra del Rio project, it is very, very similar to this, that this council approved a few years ago. And he came up with some hard facts, which is, down at Happy Valley, you have about nineteen thousand cars per day crossing through that intersection. Elliot did a study, and then we updated the traffic numbers recently to show, we have about thirty-five hundred cars per day passing this intersection, and that really is the whole story, which is, unless the state land to the north of us were to be sold and zoned residential, and we had automatically a couple thousand new folks there, you're not going to get three thousand to turn into twenty thousand cars per day overnight. So the question for Pivotal, do we own it? Do we sit on it for another twenty years and hope that, you know, state land gets sold and the flood control area to the north of us gets mitigated? You know, or do we look for another viable solution? Landowners who just spoke to you a few minutes ago from Chabola Vista said, hey, I live right next door, it's been a dust field, it's been kind of a nuisance for, for many years. Pivotal looks at it the same way. They've created amazing premier community, they want to end it with a very nice, subtle residential at, at the gateway of, of what we're talking about today. He analyzed, Elliot analyzed the other commercial core in the area, Happy Valley, the Vistancia Core, and as you can see, the numbers are up there. Seventeen percent of the property's been developed so far. There's over twelve hundred acres of commercial land available along the, the Lake Pleasant corridor. If you look at the entire region, this is the Loop Three Oh Three, the picture is even bigger. There's twenty-five hundred acres of available commercial employment land available. So north Peoria and Peoria as a whole is in good shape for the future. You know, this reduction of forty acres is not going to detrimentally affect the long-term viability of north Peoria. And that's what Chris and his staff asked us to do, and that's what they should be asking us to do, because this isn't a feel-good test, this isn't a, well, you know, brokers are telling us this, and it shouldn't be a knee-jerk reaction. It should be a, a proper analysis as to what's going to happen over the next twenty years before we let forty acres off of the books. Elliot Pollock is, is someone who cities around the valley, hires to analyze these sort of things. In the Vistancia Three Oh Three corridor, two percent of the commercial land has been developed so far. So we're just getting started in terms of, you know, the potentials. These are the other impacts that Elliot had in his study in terms of what will this residential development impact to the city? Three hundred and twenty-nine construction jobs, twenty million over the construction process of, of economic activity, total of forty-three million of total impact, primary, secondary, construction jobs, people buying stuff in the city of Peoria. Peoria will collect almost five hundred thousand in revenue. So I mention that just because this would be a generating a job and, and economic engine if it weren't sitting there vacant today, and, and if there isn't a viable use, it will sit vacant for a number of years. We started off, as, as was indicated, with all six thousand square-foot lots on the north side. We've amended the site plan a couple of times. We've been at it for about a year. It's been a lot of fun and, and a lot of hard work at the same time, met a lot of great people who are very passionate about their community, and I will tell you that our client is as well. He developed Pivotal, Pivotal developed West Wing twenty years ago with a vision, and he wants to see that vision continue on with this property. So, you know, we continue to work with, in the guidelines of the PCD. Chris went in-depth into terms of what are the guidelines. So we had to pick between these three categories. The three categories are pretty clear as to which one applies here. We're not a hillside, we're not transitioning out of a hillside, so if you're not any of those, you are low-density. And so if you choose low-density, then you're within that sort of lot, six to eight thousand square-foot lot is typically how they're being built out. So that's kind of how we came to the number that we are today. Chris went through this, I won't go through it, but it gives you a pictorial of why low-density makes sense on this particular property, because low-density has developed throughout the Parkway, the West Wing Parkway throughout the community. So it makes sense that this is not a hillside or a transition parcel, that you choose low-density residential, or that we choose low-density. And I'm not even sure that we have a choice. The PCD provides those guidelines, and those guidelines were approved by city council. Again, this is how it's been built out, and what we're trying to provide is a, a consistent lot size that is applicable to, that, that all of the design guidelines would be applicable to. So this looks and feels like any other neighborhood within West Wing. We were asked early on to, to do an analysis, well, how does what you are doing compare to what's happened? And so there's been a lot of back and forth on numbers, and what we truly did was we picked the low-density residential plats, we painstakingly printed the plants, added up all the lots to try to figure out what are the average lot sizes on all of those plats. And so what we've come to with this exhibit that demonstrates that the average lot size, if you add up all the low-density residential neighborhoods that are built and plating if you add up all the low-density residential neighborhoods that are built and plated today, the average lot size is 72,072 square feet. Now, that doesn't include hillside. It doesn't include custom lots. It doesn't include semi-custom, because that's not what we're here asking you for, is semi-custom zoning or custom zoning. We're asking for low-density residential. When we came with 72,72, we then did analysis of our own to figure out, how do we compare with that? The proposal for 140 lots is around, the average is a little over seven. It's about 7,009. So we're about 150 square foot less than the average of all the other low-density lots within the PCD. Now, we're located adjacent to the busiest road that touches West Wing. And so, we believed in our hearts that this makes a lot of sense. If you're going to put a little bit of deviation from the average lot, these two parcels are really the place that you would want to put that. Again, we did the same thing for the density. Our average density here is 3.4. The next-door parcel is at 3.75. Parcel 29 is at 3.0. If you include the eight semi-custom and custom lots, that one lot is actually 67,000 square feet. But we threw it in there because it's part of the parcel. We don't want to try to mix the numbers and make them look the way we want them. If you look at all the LDR, you have densities from 3.6 to 4.8 to 3.9. We are at 3.4. We believe we're right there in that sweet spot, not inconsistent with what's been built today. Again, we went through many neighborhood meetings, a lot of door-to-door, as was indicated, a lot of correspondence with neighbors over the last year to make sure that we are vocalizing out to the community, making sure that everyone is aware of this. There were, as mentioned, you know, our first meeting, we started off with 75 people. It was quite a meeting. It was very enjoyable to try to manage all of the questions. But we took all of that back to Pivotal. Pivotal analyzed all of the issues, all of the questions, and we came back each time with answers. These were really the issues. The density should be consistent. You need to abide by the West Wing CCNRs. No negative impact on our HOA. We'd like you to limit some two-story homes along the perimeter. Parcel sizes should be larger. And what's the impact on the school? So we had a lot of homework. Over the last four or five months, we went through, we changed the site plan, as Rick had indicated, I mean, as Rick and Chris indicated. All of the starred lots are required to be single-story only. There's no other lot in West Wing that has that requirement. So we've gone above and beyond to try to mitigate. If you look at our average sizes, we're much larger than the existing lots next door. This is a table that we provided to the neighborhood, just because even though we're at the conceptual zoning, we wanted to make sure everyone understood what the details are. So we almost took it to a pre-plat stage, so everyone could see the details. This is how we came up with the average of about 7,000. Again, there were a couple things that, as we got through the process, that we wanted to make sure were added at the end, prior to planning commission. These were commitments that we'd been talking about from day one. Chris touched on a few of them. The single-story regulation, I think, was something that we mentioned in our very first meeting. So that was actually a staff stipulation from day one. We didn't have to add that in until last second. So, again, the things that couldn't make it into the staff stipulations were our commitments to the HOA. We met with the HOA board and members no less than three or four times with their attorneys to make sure that inclusion into the HOA, exclusion, annexing in, impacts financially onto the HOA were taken care of. And if we're not going to be within that HOA, if we're not going to petition to be in, that we are going to abide by their rules, their regulations, and their design guidelines. And so, these are three, they were proposed steps at the time for obvious reasons. This isn't something the city gets involved in. And so, these are three things that the HOA's attorney and I have been talking frequently about, and these are going to be part of a separate letter agreement, with the idea that this is going to look and feel exactly like West Wing. The school district was touched upon. The issue was initially, the school district had a lot of concerns. We met with them three separate times. Each time, the school district had new demographic data. And the last time we met with them, they had the latest demographic data that had changed and morphed over the last year or so. And so, once we sat down, talked about the absorption rate of when these lots will come online, they looked at their new demographic information. They were comfortable with the rezoning and the timing of it. However, they still had a long-term need. The long-term need is they have a piece of property that was dedicated to buy Pivotal at the corner of 83rd and Happy Valley many, many years ago, that it's just too expensive to build on. And so, as you can see to the north, at the corner of Dixileta and Lake Pleasant, Pivotal owns a very similar-sized property with no hillside issues on it. So it will be much cheaper from a school district to build. So, we're proposing a land swap. And the good thing is, Pivotal used to own that. Now they own this, and we're back at the table. So we can actually solve a long-term issue that we, as an applicant, aren't necessarily driving the entire issue. We, again, as Chris mentioned, are also donating $750 per rooftop, which is consistent with the agreements in the rest of the district. There were a lot of issues, as we spoke to folks, about price, values of lots. What is this going to look like? Is it going to bring down our property values? We had a third-party broker who specializes in master plan communities, Nate Nathan, do the evaluation, provided this letter to us to say, "Hey, I've looked at all of the surrounding master plan communities, all of the recent sales. These are within 30 days of new home sales that I can tell you for certain what the range is going to be." And so, the range for new home sales in this community is actually going to be somewhere between 350 to 450. So, that's much different than I think where we started a few years ago with this, and we said, "Well, you know, ballpark, I think we might be in the high 2s." We got real data from the existing market surrounding, by a broker who specializes in this, to provide that to the community. Again, if you walk through all of the analysis here, you get to the fact that general plans and PCDs morph over time. If you look at the PCD rules, there's really no other option than low-density residential. If you choose that, and typically, that's in the 6 to 8 range, we shot right in the middle at 7,000 in terms of our average lot size. And so, before you tonight is an application that has staff support. It's got planning commission support. It has adjacent neighbor support, although there weren't as many green dots on that map that Chris showed. Those green dots are right next door. We have the school district writing a letter that agrees with the rezoning. We're consistent with the PCD. We're lower than the overall PCD cap of 2150. We're larger than the adjacent lots. And we provided extra stipulations along the way to try to mitigate specific concerns. With that, Mayor and Council will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, this is, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a reminder that this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Have not already done so? Okay. Seeing no further comments, then, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, discussion, questions? Okay. Mr. Patena?
Chris, in all three of the neighborhood meetings, comments were made that this issue is inconsistent with our general plan. Is that in fact the case?
Mayor, members of the council. So I mentioned how many people attended each neighborhood meeting. You know, most were in opposition. When you parse down that opposition, a fraction, I'll call it about a third or a quarter, the reason for their opposition was the change in land use. Other folks that were in opposition were not necessarily, didn't see a problem with it going to residential. They had an issue with lot size and other matters.
Okay. And if you could go back to the slide that showed the brown area of low-density?
This one, or?
Yeah. So the area that we're talking about is the maroon area, and the area that has the low-density is the brown area, which is to the east of that and to the south of it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So it would seem to me, I mean, I know the issue, and I get the issue with bigger lots. That's always the issue in the Mesquite District, and I get that. But it would seem to me that the low-density, which is right adjacent to the area that we're talking about, would be more consistent with the area than less consistent. Would you agree with that?
Councilmember Patena, I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to first address the community and the residents that are here today. I attended two of the three meetings, and the last one was on March 16th, and I swore in on March 17th. So, I want to thank you for your patience and, of course, pulling me right into the fast lane with this issue. It's been quite eye-opening, but I, and I have to commend you for coming together the way you have, not just West Wing, but the surrounding communities, and voicing your opinions and your concerns. And I love seeing the communities working together. I think that's important, and that's how this is all supposed to work. So, I want to express to you that I absolutely share your passion for the future of the Mesquite District, of Peoria overall. But what can happen out in our community is tremendous. And you have been heard. Your voices have been heard. I believe that the community, and I've heard different perspectives from different residents in the community and the surrounding communities. And my understanding and my belief is that the residents have come to terms with, are coming to terms with the idea that this land is better suited for residential than for commercial. So I think that is progress. And in that being said, some things to consider are, a very important factor here is the deal that is on the table for the school in that land swap. And while we may not be able to realize the benefits of that today, as we look ahead to the future of our community and opportunities for our kids, I think it's very important for the school district to have a piece of land that they can actually build on when the money is there. And that's the responsibility of the school district. We need to look at diverse densities here. And I believe that this presentation and this new proposal is doing that. I also want to address Mr. Lally, if I may, that, you know, you two have done a tremendous amount of work in representing your client and bringing the community together several times to hear them out and address their issues. And I know that that is a long process, and you have made some changes. And I, again, have listened to different perspectives and seen the numbers presented in different ways. But ultimately, as I sit in this chair, I'm compelled to hear the concerns of the residents in the community and ask for additional consideration in these lot sizes. We continue to go back to the lot sizes, and I absolutely want to approve this application, recommending that those lot sizes be increased. And before making a formal request or motion, I definitely want to hear from other council members. So, thank you.
Councilwoman, is there further discussion? So, then, you might want to put that in a formal motion.
Okay, then. So we have two separate motions?
Yes, well, we're going to have a motion on 12R at this time. So this will be general plan amendment, land use map, West Wing Mountain Development, Parcels 24 and 27, Lake Pleasant Parkway and West Wing Parkway.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the minor general plan amendment.
Okay. And are there any stipulations?
Yes, I would like to request that the minimum lot size be 7,000 square feet, which would mean adjusting 80% of these lots, reducing the lots to 130 from 140.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry. If I may, I think the type of stipulations you're asking for is probably more appropriate for the rezoning request.
Okay, so we can do that on 13?
Correct.
Okay, so we can approve the 12R as it is and do a stipulation on 13, then? Okay, all right. So excuse me for that.
Okay, so I can make a motion to approve the minor general plan amendment.
Okay, and then do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So a motion by Councilmember Binsbacher, and a second by Vice Mayor. Council, please vote. And that is unanimous. And now, we will move on to 13R. So this is rezoning, West Wing Mountain Planned Community District, Lake Pleasant Parkway, and West Wing Parkway. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning with a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, reducing the number of lots to a maximum of 130.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion, council? Mr. Finn?
I almost forgot which buttons to push there. Well, I just, I think it's a great response to what citizens kind of brought forward here. I guess my question would be, is there a comment from the one proposing for the rezoning? If there's a comment, too, before I make a vote on that. I personally, I tend to agree with what Councilmember Binsbacher said. I think you guys have done a great job of hearing what's happening out there and addressing the concerns. You looked at the school situation. You looked at the different, I think you guys have done a great job of looking at that. So, I personally, before I cast a vote, I would like to hear from you on, you know, what are your thoughts on what she's asking, and how would that impact you? And it's, your microphone, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Finn, we've been at this for about a year, and we certainly have reduced the density along the way. We've always believed that higher-density units belong along Lake Pleasant, that that's, if you're going to have that diversity of product within Lake Pleasant, this is the most appropriate place to put it, where you're not next to or transitioning into semi-custom. However, I understand the community, and I think we heard from at least seven people tonight that lot size, lot size, lot size was the important issue. I don't want to take a year's worth of work and throw it, you know, flush it down the tubes and oppose what the councilwoman is saying. It certainly is not what we had hoped for from a development standpoint. We believe that these are lots that will work and be marketable, and will still retain the flavor of the West Wing community. But, you know, understanding that the community is still here and still not supportive of where we're at, I'd be inclined to support Mrs. Binsbacher's motion tonight.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Binsbacher, and a second by Councilmember Finn. And it passes with Councilmember Leone dissenting, and that is with the stipulations specified. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to call to the public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the council for non-agenda items, please fill out a speaker request form. At this time, I have none. So we will move on to reports from City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. Just one brief report this evening under my report to the council, and it's an important one. Each year, we compile the crime statistics for the community, and when we do that, we always ask the chief, Police Chief Roy Minter, to come down and explain the crime statistics to the council and make a brief presentation of them. We're very pleased this year that the crime statistics have continued to trend downward, and that's a tribute to the leadership of Chief Minter and the fine men and women of the Police Department and their partnership with the community in so many different ways that improve the safety and the and the perception of safety within our community. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Swinton. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is truly an honor for me to appear before you tonight to talk about the outstanding work the men and women of the Peoria Police Department continue to do on a daily basis. I just want to start by reminding you of the goals of the department. First goal is, of course, to reduce crime and the fear of crime in our community. Second one is to partner with the community to identify and solve problems, and then to operate the department with maximum efficiency. Looking at our core crime prevention principles, we refer to them as the three Ps. First P stands for prevention, and when we talk about prevention, we talk about making sure that we're being reactive. We're not being reactive, but we're getting ahead of crime and being proactive. Second P stands for performance, and when we look at performance, we're looking at how we're actually assessing the performance of our officers and the other members of the department. And last but not least, we look at our partnerships, and we look at how well we're doing in the area of maintaining and strengthening our partnerships out in the community. One of the things that we look at when we look at our productivity and how well we're doing as far as being proactive as opposed to being reactive in the area of responding to crimes, is what you see before you are two, what we refer to as hotspot maps. The one on the left is hotspot map for the Peoria Police Department. The one on the right is from the Glendale Police Department. I wanted to show you a hotspot map from the Glendale Police Department to kind of stress the great partnership that we have with several agencies that, several cities that we border. We get hotspot maps from Glendale, Surprise, Phoenix, also Avondale and El Mirage. But it's one thing to have those maps and kind of take a look at them, but then you have to put together a really good, sound deployment strategy for your officers when those officers hit the streets on a daily basis. What you're looking at now is what we refer to as our DWP. It stands for our Daily Watch Plan. This is what the officers get when they report to briefings on a daily basis. If you look, it kind of lets you know some of the activities going on in the various beats around the city, and it kind of lets the officers know, it kind of gives the officers an action plan for responding to those different areas. HVE stands for High Visibility Enforcement. POP stands for Polycr offender program. PWT stands for Park, Walk and Talk. That's a nice way of saying we ask our officers to get out of the cars whenever they can, park the cars, walk around, spend some time talking to people. But we also, if you look at that last column, it kind of talks about, you know, when we want the officers to be in those specific areas. The Daily Watch Plan kind of gives us kind of our roadmap for the officers, and it kind of sets out where we need them to be, when we need them to be there, and exactly what we need them to do. If you look at the bottom part of the Daily Watch Plan, that's a recap for the supervisors. And that's a method of the supervisors being able to hold the officers accountable and being able to assess the officer's performance. So, that's really what we use as kind of the cornerstone of our deployment strategy for our officers on a daily basis. When we talk about performance, and Mr. Swinton alluded to it a little bit earlier, we look at our crime statistical data for the past two years. If you look at 2013, we were down in overall crime almost 18%. If you look at last year for 2014, we were down just over 13%. Now, one of the things that you'll see on there, where you see a pretty substantial increase, and I want to make sure I took some time to explain it to the council, is an increase in the area of sexual assaults. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're experiencing a significant increase in sexual assaults in our community, but it refers more to a change in the reporting criteria that was set down by the Department of Justice. 2012, the FBI realized that they had not changed the definition for sexual assault or what they refer to as forcible rape since 1927. And they realized the definition that they were using kind of excluded a list of sexual offenses that are criminal offenses, but were not required to be reported. So, this is really the first year where we're capturing more or all of those additional offenses. So, I just want to make sure that I clarified that for the council. I know a lot of times when we talk about our crime statistical data, a lot of people want to know how we measure up with some of the other cities in the area. So, if you look at, and this is the statistical data from 2013, 2014 is not out yet. We should be getting the 2014 statistical crime information from surrounding cities, probably in the next three to four weeks. We were down, as you see, we had a significant decrease in crime and almost 18%, and we basically led the east and the west valley. Surprise was not too far behind us, about 14.5%, and then you got Chandler and Glendale coming in at just under 10%. So, very good year, and it really reflects the hard work the men and women of the Peoria Police Department continue to do every day. Of course, one of the things that helps us in keeping our crime rate low is our tremendous partnerships and our programs that we have out in the community. If you look on the left side, it kind of highlights some of the great, outstanding programs that we have or partnerships we have with PUSD, Trine University, the Alder Dealerships, construction managers. And then if you look on the right, it kind of highlights some of the outstanding programs that we use to keep our crime rate down. The Coffee with a Commander, which is now Coffee with a Cop, and then our Crime Shield Program, Block Watch, of course, nextdoor.com, and crimereports.com. You know, partnering with our community is one of our most important goals, and, you know, our goal of to partner with the community and identify and solve problems. But when we talk about partnering with the community, we look at our two strategies that we use, and that is information sharing and resource awareness have really helped us in partnering with the community. I want to kind of give you an update on a program that one of our officers put together that kind of shows the innovation and progressive thinking that a lot of our officers have and really creating new partnerships out in the community that's really helped us to keep our crime rate down. Officer Rob Miller created a program that we implemented in the Entertainment District called SMART. SMART stands for Social Media Addressing Retail Theft. It's an innovative program that uses social media. Basically, it's a private Facebook page that creates a unique partnership between businesses to decrease theft and shoplifting and foster collaborative problem-solving relationship among Police Department and the merchants. Officer Miller first got this program up and running, and virtually all the managers in the retail store areas near the 83rd and Bell area are participating in this program. The project uses, like I said, a closed Facebook page that they use to communicate with each other. And the project allows the participants to monitor and allow store managers, loss prevention personnel, and the police to post information regarding crime trends and suspicious persons and other relevant information. Officer Miller got this program up and running in September. He started working on it. It was up and running in November, and we saw a tremendous difference in that area in December during the Christmas holiday. The reason why I wanted to bring it to your attention is this program has worked so well. We're looking at now expanding this to the Alder Dealerships along the Bell Road corridor to give them the opportunity to do a better job of communicating amongst each other, but also expanding it to the retail area along Lake Pleasant and the Happy Valley Road area. I really want to, and Officer Miller is back there in the back, you know, I really want to thank him for the outstanding and innovative program that he put together, because this is really something great that he put together. Officer Miller, if you could just stand for us? So, once again, that shows the great innovation and progressive thinking of, you know, a lot of our officers who are out there on the street. Of course, when we talk about partnerships, our gold star of our community partnership programs is our UCAN program. And just wanted to basically bring to your attention, our UCAN program recently won two awards, and the UCAN program is getting a lot of local and national attention. In November, we won the Best of the West Quality of Life Enhancement Award. And then in December, we received the National Recognition from Workforce Magazine, their Optimist Award. And last week, the Vice Mayor accompanied me downtown to downtown Phoenix and accepted the award on behalf of the city from the Transforming Local Governments Group for the Innovation Award for April of 2015. So, we're very proud of the UCAN program and what we've been able to accomplish by continuing to build that strong partnership and a strong relationship with members of our community. And last but not least, I know I've got Deputy Chief Benny Pena here and Commander Jason Kristofferson. I just really want to commend the outstanding work the men and women of the Peoria Police Department continue to do on a daily basis, the officers who are there on a line level, and then also the support units within the Police Department. They do continue to do an outstanding work, not just partnering with our community, but keeping our community safe and showing that we have not only one of the best communities in this area, but one of the safest communities in this area. And there's the picture of the Vice Mayor and us accepting the award. And I'll now answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? This morning, I attended an event that was started by another one of your officers, Officer Carpenter, Sergeant Carpenter. Would you like to talk about that event?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up. Sergeant Carpenter worked very closely with Leadership West Alumni Association, and he put together an organization that they refer to as HEAR. HEAR stands for Heroin Education and Resources. They had a seminar this morning over at Rio Vista Recreation Center where we brought together people from the law enforcement community, education sector, treatment centers. There was a representative there from the Governor's Office, and we started the discussion on what we can do as a community to increase awareness and education in our community about the use and addiction of drugs like heroin in our community. This is something that's spread to other communities. I know Surprise has done a drug awareness presentation. El Mirage has done one. I believe Wickenburg has done one. Glendale has done one. But we want to make sure that we keep the education and awareness on the forefront. And this morning's meeting or this morning's seminar was kind of a way to, you know, keep the momentum going and keep the awareness and the education out there in the forefront of our community.
Thank you.
And thank you for your attendance, Mayor.
I know that our citizens appreciate everything that you do, everything that everyone on the police force does, and it's commendable. It really is. We do feel safe in our community. And, you know, it's hard to say anything that's more valuable than that. Youth Liaison, Malane?
Speaking of the times that we live in, of course, there seems to be, and of course, the media contribute to this bit of polarization between law enforcement sometimes and, of course, members of the community. And a lot of that, sometimes that antagonism comes from people of the youth. But I'd just like to commend you guys, especially in the city of Peoria, of how well you do with not only communicating with members of the youth, but reaching out to them. I mean, I speak to different members from my school and, of course, all across the district, and not only from the programs and services that you provide, from putting on things like community partnership events that you have for us, also the SWAG event that I've been able to go to. I mean, that sort of relationship and that sort of active communication with young people is so, so important. And I can just let you know of how awesome students feel knowing that they have police officers who care about their safety and their well-being, and that truly speaks to the true character of the Police Department that we have here in the city of Peoria. So, I'd just like to really thank you on that and all that you do for keeping us safe and really, really, really making sure that you communicate with us and have an active relationship and interest in our, in our well-being. So, thank you.
And thank you very much, Youth Liaison, Malane.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention one of our other partners who's in the audience tonight, and that's Commander Andre Anderson from the Glendale Police Department. So, thank you very much, Commander Anderson. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Swinton, anything else?
Just a couple of other quick items. We have another one of our series of Park Fest events, and this will be at Sweetwater Park Saturday, May 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And this coming Sunday, April 26th, from 8:00 a.m., excuse me, from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in Osuna Park, we have the Multicultural Music Festival, and that's a partnership with the Northwest Black History Committee. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, we will move on to remarks from the council. Council Youth Liaison, Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say a special thank you to the Boy Scout troop, to 298, for doing the flags. There's one of them left right there. You guys did a great job. In addition, this weekend, I participated in a community service project with Chase Bank and their Good Worker, and their Good Works program on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leonie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the Boy Scouts also for being here. It's been many years since I had a uniform on. I'm going back like maybe, what, 70 years? Anyway, on April 11th, I attended the Peoria Arts Festival at Osuna Park. You know, we have a lot of great events going on, and this is one of our biggest ones. And partners with the school and Theater Works, there was a lot of bands. If you was, if you was there and you went down practically every street, you'll see a band. If you didn't see a band, you see people dancing. And I went into Theater Works, and they had a show going on. And it's just great that we have these things going on in the city of Peoria, and it brings people together. The event team did a great job, and I want to congratulate them. I want to congratulate the Police Department, who also was there, who was running around, checking everything out and keeping the peace, and also, I can't forget the Fire Department, because they were doing a great job, also running around and checking things out, make sure there's no fires. And also, you gotta give, ask me some credit, because they're going around picking up all the papers and cans that people are throwing down on the ground. So, I just want to say thank you to all of them. Saturday, I went to Castle Rock Block Party, and it was great. And we had about 20 people there, and it was just exciting that everybody start, everybody start talking about how to protect your neighbors and how to protect your, your house. So, anyway, I want to thank everybody, and God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Finn?
Just have a couple of things. I had the opportunity to attend a fundraiser at Quanis Park where Quanis Club was helping raise money for playground equipment. And one of the things that I thought was really, really neat about this was they invited the community into, have their input on exactly what was going to go into the park, and they did it by having stickers that they could put on the playground equipment that they most favored. So, I thought that was really cool, the way that they put that together and the way that they did that. It was a great turnout, great food. Always comes back to food for me. It's great food. And then the other thing I wanted to just mention was I thought the Cub Scouts did a great job. But you, in particular, young man, you stuck this thing out the entire time. Look around you. Everyone else has bailed on you. But you stuck it out. I'm proud of you, unless you're here because you did something wrong and they made you do it. But I'm proud of you.
My brother.
Okay, well, I'm proud of you. I don't care whose brother you are. I'm proud of you. That's all I got.
Brother. Youth Council Liaison, Malane?
So, actually, two weeks ago, I wasn't able to attend the council meeting here because I was down at a business conference down in Tucson for the Future Business Leaders of America. It's one of the great career and technical education programs that the Peoria Infight School District supports, interstate supports. And actually, Senator McCain ended up stopping by at our conference. It was a surprise that he came, that it was going to come at all. He came and spoke to about 1,500 members who were gathered here all across the state of Arizona who had gathered here at the conference, and Peoria schools did extremely well. Centennial High School, I think, were taking 40 students to Nationals. Peoria High School is taking, I think, 15. Ironwood High School, I'm sorry, not Ironwood High School, Liberty. All schools in the Peoria Infight School District, in the Peoria area, have done awesome in those events. But it was awesome, great seeing Senator McCain there at the event, too. And then also from today, I think it's one month exactly, yes, from today, until my graduation for high school, which is super exciting. Senioritis has definitely kicked in. But other than that, I've greatly enjoyed my time here, and I look forward to the remainder of my days serving here in this capacity and representing the youth of Peoria. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to congratulate the Scouts and just thank you for staying and sticking it out. And just having you all here really does kind of take this council meeting to another level and kicks it off in just a great way. So, thank you for being here. I also attended Arts in the Park. I want to congratulate staff on a great event. Anytime you can grow an event and develop an event like this that brings people from all over the city to a community, it is, it's wonderful, and I really enjoyed it. And my daughter participated. Theater Works was great. It was all great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patina? Vice Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to wish a belated happy birthday to Councilman Leonie last week, and a happy birthday to Councilman Hunt today. Happy birthday. Last week, I was honored to... Last week, I was honored to be able to deliver the opening remarks at Project Connect over at the New Life Community Church. This event was hosted by a partnership between the West Valley United Way and Leadership West. The event had about 150 volunteers, and at the time that I was there, about 350 people in need, and the services that they were offering were free dental, free medical, free vision. They were offering to take people down to get them ID cards downtown, and we, I was able to see a lot of our staff down there volunteering their time, and I just want to commend the staff members that took the time to help the community. I just applaud them. So thank you very much. This weekend was very busy. On Saturday, I attended the Party for the Planet down at the New River Trail. This is the third year I participate in this event, and I believe we had about 200 volunteers. We were picking up tires, mattresses, you name it. It was out there. I was out there for a couple hours doing that, and then immediately ran, literally ran from there and then headed over to Sundance Elementary where myself and Chief Mentor spent the better part of three and a half to four hours cleaning tables and restrooms. And so it was a great opportunity to just give back to the community. There was a lot of people there helping out, parents, teachers, and kids, and it was just amazing to watch the enthusiasm of the kids as we were helping painting, planting bushes, just trying to refresh their school. So again, I commend the Police Department and the PPOA for putting that on, so thank you very much. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. There being no further business, we are now adjourned, and we are going to reconvene as the Vastancia Community Facilities District Board. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chairperson Carlet? Did you call me? Did you say call the roll? Call the roll. Okay. Chairperson Carlet?
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Board Member Ben Sparker?
Here.
Board Member Patana?
Here.
Board Member Finn?
Still here.
Board Member Hunt?
Here.
Board Member Leonie?
Here.
Board Liaison Malane?
Here.
And Board Liaison Halt?
Here.
Thank you. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. If anyone would like to address the board on an agenda item, if you would like to speak regarding a non-agenda item, please fill out a speaker request form. I have no speaker request forms at this time. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is the minutes from the March 3rd meeting. I see no request to remove that Consent Agenda item. Is there a motion? Okay. So moved by Board Member Patana and seconded by Vice Board Member Edwards.
Board Member Ben Sparker? We're waiting on yours.
It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda, item 17R.
Brent Manningly will make the presentation on this item.
Thank you. Tonight, the board is considering approving the tentative budget for the Vastancia Community Facilities District as well as the tax levy for the district for fiscal year 2016, also establishing a public hearing date of May 19th for the budget and the tax levy. The proposed budget before you this evening provides for an operating and capital budget of $18.8 million. It proposes to maintain the current $2.10 tax rate for debt service, and it identifies the annual debt service requirements for all three outstanding bond issues to be approximately $5.5 million for the year. $2.6 million of that would come from the tax levy itself, and $2.8 million is estimated to come from the developer through the standby contribution agreement. So, and staff recommends adoption of the Resolution 2015-01 before you this evening that approves the proposed budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 2016, as well as establishing that public hearing date on May 19th.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Manningly? Have a motion? Okay. I have a motion by Board Member Hunt and a second by Vice, Vice Board Member Edwards. Board, please vote. It is unanimous. And one more. We are adjourned, and we are reconvened as the Vastancia West Community Facilities District Board. Clerk, will you please note the roll? Final call to submit speaker request forms. I have none. We will move on to the Consent Agenda. Council, do I have a motion? Board, do I have a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Second.
No. It's been moved and seconded. It is unanimous. We will move on to item 19R.
Brent's getting pretty good at this, so we'll let him do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, the board is considering approving the tentative Vastancia West Community Facilities District budget and tax levy estimate for fiscal year 2016 and establishing a public hearing also on May 19th for the budget and tax levy. The proposed budget provides for an operating and capital budget of $113,500. It anticipates a small private placement bond sale of up to $60,000, which the board has already approved at a prior meeting. It proposes a $2.10 tax rate for debt service. It anticipates taxes to be generated by that tax levy of approximately $18,500, which would cover the debt service for the year. With that, staff recommends adoption of Resolution 2015-02 that approves the proposed budget and the tax levy estimates for this next fiscal year and establishes the public hearing date on May 19th.
Thank you. Board, any questions for Mr. Manningly? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Board, please vote. It is unanimous. With that, we are adjourned.